Welcome everybody to the Zonin Board Meeting on January 11th, 2022. My name is Marty Akins. I'm the Chairman, the Vice Chairman, Mr. Covaeus. Our Board Members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Hemel, Mr. Franco, and Mr. Ray Dell with us tonight. If we could, could we wave the, get a motion to waive the minutes for, uh?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
December 14th, please.
Yes, I'd make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of December 14th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. The clerks, like I said, not here tonight, she's sick. Commissioner Duca will be taking roll call and votes. First, under Old Business, they have case number ZBA 2171, and they want, I got a letter here to continue that, and this is a couple times this has been done, they want to meet with the neighbors again, so if we could, why don't we put them off till March 8th? I think that's the date I wrote, March 8th.
That is.
But I, uh, yeah.
And number 21-71, Anthony Patrick Foley, for variances through this college district, single-family home and build a new two-family townhouse-style home on the premises number 49 Chase Street, make a motion to continue the hearing on March 8th.
Second.
On the motion, Commissioner, could you take a roll call vote? Certainly, who's on? Uh, Akins, O'Brien, Covaeus, Ray Dell, and Hemel.
Roll call vote, uh, Michael Vass?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien? Brian Ray Dell?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Yes. Marty Akins?
Yes.
Motion continued, passes.
Okay. Uh, second, under Old Business, 10 seconds, LLC for variance, find and construct an addition existing fire damage commercial space for a restaurant on the premises number 429 Hancock Street, is the applicant or representative here?
If the applicant or representative would like, they could use the virtual hand raise located under the reactions button, or turn on your screen, you just give us a whiz.
Mr. Fleming, ain't it? You, you taking care of?
It, it was, uh... Hello?
No, oh. All right, you taking care of, uh?
Uh, good evening, this is Chi Man from Hardy Man Design Group.
Yes, now, go ahead.
I, my recollection is the attorney was going to ask for continuous on this case.
Yeah, because I, I mean, you haven't been a planning yet, everything in there is a little tight, and I think, you know, it'd be better for the board that if, if, if we let it go through planning first, so when are you gonna get there, do you have any idea?
Uh, with, the, the owner is working out some share parking agreement at this point, so we, the, the, the only item that we have difficulty is finding parking, as you know, site is very tight existing building, so, um...
I think the building a little makes some parking.
Yeah. So, the, the owner is working out some parking agreement at this point, so, once that is settled, we can go back to the planning board.
All right, so, say, March?
Um, yeah, I would say March, I mean, February would be too, too early.
One minute, one minute.
I, I think the earliest they would get on against the planning would be in May.
You might not get...
Only once a month.
Right, they meet once a month, so you might not get there till May.
Okay.
Done and done.
Have they go through the process?
All right, you wanna, wanna put a date in April and we can move in a month, and that'll give him a chance if he gets things done earlier, because it's been on our agenda a while now, uh, if we could, uh, April 26th, Mr. Covaeus?
Yeah, but the matter number, uh, ZBA 2111, 10 seconds, MA LLC, for a verified construct in addition to the existing fire damage commercial space for restaurant using the premises number 429 Hancock Street, I make the motion to continue the hearing of people 26.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, Commissioner, could we have a roll call vote?
Michael Covaeus?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Brian Ray Dell?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Marty Akins? Yes, thank you. Further, under ZBA, Old Business, ZBA 2184, Mohammed Ben Zvedi, for finding variance, special permit flood plan to construct two additions to culminated two-car garage living space on the premises 479 South Shore Drive, Quincy Shore Drive, I'm sorry, uh, is the applicant or their representative here?
Yes, I am here.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming, um, uh, just, I'm gonna be brief, I just kinda wanna open this up for the board, uh, this is a continued matter from, uh, I believe the 23rd of November, right before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
Um, this is a proposed couple additions to a single-family residence, um, during the 11/23 hearing, uh, the board had some questions, a little bit of concern with respect to the rear addition, um, which, uh, will include two, two garages, uh, as well as two bedrooms on the second floor, um, we had continued the matter, uh, at the request of this board, to be able to go back and revise it and kinda bring the scale in a little bit of that proposed addition, um, so we, we've just, we've done just that, uh, I'm, Chi Man is the engineer, uh, from Hardy Man on this project as well, so he'll, she's gonna speak this evening as well, he'll share those plans, uh, with, with the board, um, and they can, he can tell you exactly what, what we did, uh, to that proposed addition. Um, we, uh, we met again, uh, before the Conservation Commission on the 5th of this month, uh, with these revised plans, um, and the Conservation Commission did issue an order of conditions on the 5th, um, we are seeking, as the board knows, a special permit flood plane as well, uh, this evening, uh, there was some discussion, a little bit from neighbors with concerns, uh, however, we do now have an order of conditions, we are building these proposed additions in, in compliance with the regulations, um, so without further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to Chi Man to kinda discuss some of the revisions that were made to this proposed rear addition.
Yeah, we get the set of plans here, we'd like to see exactly what was changed, okay, thank you, sir. Uh, could you, could you, uh, take another place, Mr. Covaeus?
Mr. Man, you pledge to the truth, the whole truth, about the, about the truth, or help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
If I may, I'd like to share the screen, um, and show you, uh, bring the site plan up. Okay, so in front of you, we have the, um, uh, the site plan, the, the changes we made with, after discussion with the board last time, uh, we decided to, uh, cut down the, the size of the additions and the garage, um, it was previously, um, layout was 24 by 29, um, we have cut, uh, 26 by 29, and we, we basically cut, cut down two feet, so there was eight foot setback was asking for, we, now we propose to give a couple more feet setback, uh, give a little more room in between the, um, the neighboring properties, um, so with that, we also is going to, and, and with the agreement from the Conservation Commissions, um, we are going to, um, align the new, the new driveway to cut down the existing pavement, so with that, um, we are gonna have approximately, I believe it's like 70, 80 feet of additional green space as comparing to the, uh, existing site, so the design of the building, the addition is going to have flood vent, uh, because this is in frost zone, and, um, and we are adding more green space, so the runoff is going to be reduced from the proposed conditions, and also the, the design of the building is going to be meeting the performance standard of the FEMA and DEP regulation in regard to building within the frost zone, um, with that, I'm gonna move...
What about the, uh, what about, what about the pool you're putting in? I thought we talked about, you know, we wanted to make sure how deep you were going with that, were you gonna raise that a couple feet maybe?
Uh, well, we look at that, and the pool is going to be basically a pool deck in, in that, uh, floor, maintain the existing floor, the pool is only a therapeutic pool, it's only go down four feet, it's not like a, a very deep, uh, swimming pool, so...
No, but, but we're worried about the water table there, you're taking up room away from the water table, so we're just saying, is there any way you could have lifted that up, and have a step up to it, and it would be two feet closer to the ground, that's, you know, uh, something less than you want.
I mean, in a practical standpoint, um, we can do it, but it's gonna be substantially reduce this, like this, the, the ceiling height in the room, so practically, um, it works.
Isn't this, isn't this part of your addition over here, though, you're adding on it?
Excuse me?
Are you putting, isn't part of that your addition over there?
That's the part of the additions.
Yeah, so, so, why would it change the roof height?
Well, that's only the, also the second floor above that, so the second floor is gonna meet the, the existing floor elevations as, as well.
So maybe, maybe you have a two, two-foot walk-up to go into, that's all I'm saying, I mean, it was talked about, uh, flood table there, and, you know, I'm just asking you a couple questions, so, you didn't look in?
Yep.
Okay.
So, the front, the groundwater elevation is, if you, if you know how the groundwater is, it, elevation work is, is by the hydrostatic pressure and the, and soil conditions, it's pretty much stay where it is, um, it's, it's not gonna come up high, higher, um, so, and the pool area is very small, the groundwater is gonna migrate, um, around the pool, so it's not blocking the groundwater flow through the area, I do not see an impact from, from this pool at all, in, in top of the groundwater, it's just exactly just like the, um, any foundation, this good foundation is gonna go down four feet, and this is just the same...
Having the foundation, you don't have a bottom, a bottom side, and it, and it's all out with the flow through, this don't have no flow through, so it can go back and forth, the route and in, correct? It's a pool, it's just taking up an area of space.
It's take up the, the volume under, under the ground.
What's the size of the pool?
Um, we have not designed the exact size of the pool, yet, but it's roughly about 12 by 8.
12 by 8?
Yeah, it's a small room, it's the, the room size is only 24 by 16.
All right, all right, go ahead.
And what I have shown on the screen here, and let me make it a little smaller, is the, um, the floor plans, I put the existing and proposed next to it, so we understand what is being added, so the pool area is, is a new additions, and the garage is the new additions, the size of the properties.
Yep.
And this is the elevations, uh, from the front, again, you can see the new additions, uh, to the, if you're looking from Quincy Shore Drive, this is the left side of the, uh, the house.
Yep.
And to the right side, it, what is proposed is the deck coming out from the, um, second floor. And this is the rear elevations, looking from the back of the house, um, this is the proposed garage additions, looking from the neighbor properties on Webster Street, and this is the new additions from, um, where the pool and the, and the second floor kitchen is going to be. And this is the, uh, left side elevations.
Okay.
So, I think last time we had a little misrepresentations, the existing house has four bedrooms, um, what we are proposing here is five bedrooms altogether, um, our client has, you know, a couple and, uh, three childrens, two 19-years-old and a 10-years-old, so basically, you know, they are gonna each have a bedroom, and a guest room for, um, they do have time to time a helper coming in to, uh, help the, um, one of their child, and also sometimes a family member come by and stay overnight, so it's just a natural bedroom, so it's, you know, five bedroom is not really huge, um, as far as, I don't want to give the impression that, you know, this is a, you know, some neighbor talking about this going to be Airbnb and something like that, but this is not the case, um, this is purely for the owner use, you know, the, there's five member in the, in the, in the households right now.
All right, everything in that house is in common, it, it's, there's no block.
And consider the floor plan, it's not like breaking out into different rooms, so...
And, and are you changing anything on the house, as far as, are you just gonna match what's on the house to the addition?
It's gonna match whatever in the house and additions, while the, the ceiling, the roof height is gonna change a couple feet, because we are taking out the roof to rebuild the roof anyway, so, we are just kicking up the ceiling height on, on the existing second floor, uh, to frame that up a couple feet, so...
What, are you gonna have 10-foot ceilings on the second floor?
Yes, and what you can see on the screen here, we put this, um, this is the side elevation from Webster Street, uh, where the proposed garage is, so the new proposed setback is 10 foot from the property line, and, um, the neighboring property has about eight-foot setback, and you can look at the building height, um, we are even adding two feet, we are way under from, you know, in, in comparing the scale, the height of the building, uh, as comparing to the neighbor, and just want to point that out, that I know, um, on the, on the neighboring properties, um, the, the single-story additions that was, that was added some time ago, I believe is 2007, got the CBA approval, um, to build within the property line, I know it's not the current owner, but it's the current owner father, who did that back in 2070, um, and... So, we look at the, the, the size of the building in the neighborhood, and the size of the setback though, um, look at the, the GIS from the, um, from the city map, it's very cons, the setback is very consistent with what the, what the existing buildings are in the neighborhood, they are, yeah, a lot of them are just a driveway separation between houses, so we, we believe that this is well, in, you know, in context to the neighborhood, and as far as the size, I mean, um, there are building, existing building in the neighborhood that's, that's like, for instance, 433 Quincy Shore Drive, that's 4,600 square feet living area, um, 571 Quincy Shore Drive, just a block away, that's 2,300, 2,400 square feet, you know, the footprint and the scale of the lot area is very compatible to the, um, to the area.
Yeah.
I know some of the smaller lot have smaller sized building, but, you know, it's, it's a tight neighborhood, I, I have to say, you know, I mean, you do not admit, um...
Yeah.
So, and, um, I think that's pretty much is that this what we are presenting to the board tonight, and, um, you know, we work, we want to work with the board and work with the neighbor to, um, come up with a nice project, and, you know, give the neighbor some, some separations as well, and also we, we do agree to put in a fence in between the, um, right at the property line, a, a six-foot vinyl chaining, uh, not chaining fence, a, a vinyl fence, um, so give each other some privacy as well.
Give your neighbor privacy?
Well, we are, we have, we are offered to put, uh, vinyl fence over...
They wanted a fence over, right, right, okay.
Yeah, so, you know, with a little separation, we don't want them to feel like we are watching them or they are watching us.
Great, Mr. Covaeus, any questions?
I, well, the only thing I have a question of is I, I could see the dimensions of the new proposal, but I didn't see the dimensions of the old property, the current property, I would like to have seen that, just to see exactly the changes of the height and the whiteness and all that.
Yeah, it's right, it's, Mr. Covaeus is right above it on each, on each plan.
It is.
Existing conditions, yeah.
They'll tie it in each page, yeah, old and new on each page.
But not, I didn't see a dimension.
Talking about the, uh, eight to 10 feet on the side?
Well, I'm talking about, for example, when you look, I look at the plan, and I see the existing and proposed front elevation view, I don't have any dimensions on the existing front elevation.
Oh, the elevations?
Oh, for example, yes.
All right.
Yes, um, I guess we didn't add that dimension on the elevations, but, um, all the new proposed, uh, dimension on, on, like the, where we're looking at the rear elevation, we show the, the size of the...
30 inches higher than you're raising, that's, that, that the peak of the house, correct?
Yes, yes, it's basically just raising the ceiling a couple, uh, 30 inches, and we framed the, uh, the roof, and the proposed is only 25 feet, which the, the songing, uh, I believe is 35 feet.
Yeah.
Requirement?
I understand the requirement.
25, 25.
Existing is 20, 22 and a half, and proposed is 25.
Now, you're, you're raising the ceilings two feet, right?
Yes.
Why do you have to go up another six inches, if you get the same roof, the same, the same pitch that you had before, why you making a higher pitch?
Um...
Right?
Well...
And if the roof is the pitch, you just raise it two feet, I'll come on up another half foot, I just don't know.
Materials...
Yeah, I'm, I'm taking what the owner provided to me, so, I'm not 100% sure why that's six inches different, but it's just, I guess it's just...
Unfortunately, we don't have our architect, uh, we don't have our architect available this evening, but I think there was a comment on just structurally, I think it'll add that six inches.
Yeah. It's just, I guess it's just the way they, they added the framing. And the pitch.
Could I interrupt one second, Marty? Marty, I can't even see you.
Go ahead.
I always see the top of your head now.
All right, go ahead.
There you go, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. O'Brien, give it a question?
The thing that I recall...
Hold up, hold up, Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
The thing that I recall was the neighbors were, um, concerned about the, the water on the driveway and from the front of the house, and it appears as though an order of conditions would take care of that, and the...
Yes, wait.
That, so that's...
Our proposal is bad, uh...
Hey, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Okay, that's the point.
Hold up, no, please, Mr. Man.
Yeah.
All right, Charlie, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I come back to the idea that they, people were concerned because there was flooding in the backyards there, and they were concerned that this addition would add to the flooding, but apparently the order of conditions addressed that, um, by putting in, uh, permeable, uh, areas under the garage and under the addition.
Yeah.
And then some grass there, so it wouldn't all be asphalt.
Right.
So, I think that that, to me, addresses what the main concern was there, other than the height, so, I'm satisfied with what they've done.
All right, uh, Mr. Ray Dell, any questions? Can we get this off the screen, please, so I can get my screen back, Sean, thanks.
Sure. Let me just exit out, okay, and, um...
No questions, all right, uh, Mr. Hemel?
Yeah, I like the Conservation Committee where they have, they'll be taking up some of the asphalt, putting that strip of, uh, non-permeables and putting in the grass in, and I also like your idea, Marty, of raising that pool up two feet, I don't think that would be a horrible, uh, uh, addition to it, will be, it'll be less, less concrete in the ground.
No, not yet, hold up, the board's talking though, all right, uh, any ideas on that, Mr. Fleming?
You know, I, I'm, I have to listen to Chi, and, and I wish I had our architect available as well, uh, but I think Chi made the point, if you're, if you're raising the pool, uh, again, you'll have an issue with the ceiling height in, in that, in the, with the, in the room that the pool will be in.
Well, you really won't, because there'll be an addition, your addition takes up two steps, like going in, I've seen many homes I've gone in, and when you go to the master bedrooms or something, you just step up two steps.
Well, and the second, on the second floor as well?
Well, you would, right, either make that small, or you're raising both.
I think you'd have to raise them both, yeah.
Yeah, you have to raise the whole second floor, it's, uh, it's the kitchen over there, and also the owner, Mohammed, is also here, he, I, I think he would like to make his own presentation as well.
Yeah, would the board give him an opportunity to speak?
Yeah.
That would be great, okay.
Uh, hold, hold on, you're gonna have to take another, Mr. Covaeus, please.
See, do you swear, held true, the whole truth, about the book truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you have the floor, sir.
Uh, regarding the pool, it was there, we did not change it since last time, and it was there with the Conservation Meeting, and, uh, I have very important point for this pool, uh, definitely it's four feet depth, so it is not for me, not for my family, it is only for my special need child, or we need that, it is small, and, uh, every day we take her to YMCH, she gives us very, very hard time, and, uh, so to have two feet to cross it, it will be, cannot do that, you know, for her, she's, she has disability with the mentally and the physical, and, uh, won't work unfortunately that way, you know, it is not about anything else.
All right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah?
Yeah, we're all set right now, you answer that question.
For the, for the height of the ceiling, still, I, I asked for six feet more, uh, six inch more, because with that, still my house one of the lowest in the, in the street, you know, and because it, it will be longer after the addition, to match it, uh, from architecture view, it would be better to have it higher, so, but within that, still lower than that, uh, I want to say, uh, gentlemen, that we worked hard to pass this, uh, process, thankfully we made the approval from the Conservation, I remember we've been in this process since May, when I hired the survey office to do the work, and now we are in eight months, you know better than me, it's time and money consuming, consuming, but I have two reasons, one, which is common for anyone want to make improvement, addition, or remodeling to the house they live in, which is make better life to the family, also we have private reason, and in that case, I want my wife to talk about it, because she's more engaged than me in that, uh, so here's, if you give her a opportunity, I would be appreciative.
Sure.
Hi.
Hi.
I just, uh, I just wanted to let you know, because I, and we have a special need child, I asked my husband for help, because I have twins, girls, one of them have Engerman Syndrome, I don't know if you have any idea about it?
No.
And, uh, she cannot, she cannot walk very well, uh, cannot talk, just few, few words, and...
We lost the audio. Anyone else hear him, is it just me?
No, can't hear.
Yeah, try, try speaking a little bit closer to your microphone.
Try that.
Now you can hear me well?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, as I said, I have twin girls and one little boy, nine years old, and my daughter Maya, she have special need, Engerman Syndrome, it's affect her sleeping, talk, walk... Uh, my daughter Maya, she have special need, Engerman syndrome, it's affect her sleeping, talk, walk, it's really hard to live with a special need, and the problem is keep affecting her twin sister. Like, at night she cannot sleep, she keep waking up everybody. We have problem, we, we know we cannot solve it, but at least to do something. Yeah. So, when she cannot walk, especially with the COVID, I know it's affect everybody, but with her, doctor always told me she losing her skull. Like, she be not able to walk, if I keep doing exercise for her, and she is big, we go to the YMCA thankfully, but the problem, she is low, she is my size. Uh, it's so hard to bring her out from the pool, and when I ask for help, it's give me like an hour. And the problem, they want me to get out, because they say, we are sorry, we know she's special need, but we have a schedule, and you have to leave now.
Right.
That's really hard for me, and I asked, I asked him to solve the problem, he say maybe we can do like a small pool instead of.
Yeah.
You know, and the other thing, she need the speech therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and people keep coming, I cannot let, you know, anybody because of my other kids. So, I asked.
I have no idea what you're going through, but I can imagine, I, I can imagine that, and.
Thank you so much.
We try to, we try to do everything we can for the neighborhood and the neighbors, and like I said, it is all, all, all the board members here are volunteers, and they try to do the best they can for the city. So when we ask you and question you, it's not because yay or nay, we're just trying to make sure everyone in the neighborhood don't get affected because someone else needs something.
And that's what I love about you. I, that's what we love about the Quincy, and I told my husband, just tell them the reason behind the wall, just let them know, we need it, it's not, we are greedy people, we want a luxury life.
Right.
For our needs, and that's make her life easy, because you know, she, she, we know she will live with us forever, and the same, we don't wanna affect one of her kids, and you know, like, just her life. So, I, I appreciate, I don't wanna keep talking, because, like, we have our difficulties with our life, so I appreciate if you can help us with that, just to.
Thank you very, thank you for your time tonight, too, that's. Any other questions do we have here? Anyone? Anyone on the board, any questions?
No.
No, I'm good.
Alright, uh, is there anyone that wants to talk in favor right now? Anyone that wants to speak in favor of this proposal? First call. Second call.
Use that virtual hand raise or turn on your screen, we have Citizen Roderfeld.
Citizen Roderfeld, you are up, take an oath, please.
Do you swear, hold true, hold true, not the book true?
I do, thank you, John Roderfeld, sixty-two Grandwall Road. I just wanna say that I'm in favor of this, um, you know, we just passed that thing for no Airbnb in residential A, so this is in residential A, so no one should have to worry about them even doing Airbnb here, um, you know, and you have to let the people who own property in this city, it seems like once they do this, they're gonna be here for a long time, and I wish them the best, but I definitely support this, thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Third call? While I probably am hearing close, any correspondence?
There isn't.
No correspondence. Is there anyone that would like to be opposed or undecided, like to speak?
Counselor Harris.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris, you're up.
Give me one of those. Thank you, thank you, thanks very much, and again, um, uh, to the zoning board, I wanna say, uh, thank you for what you do, yes, uh, as I heard earlier, you folks are volunteers, you folks are the folks that um, protect our neighborhoods, protect uh everybody's individual rights, and I applaud yous, and this is uh, this is a very difficult uh situation we have going on here, we, we just heard from um, the appellant uh folks, and I'm just gonna um, say that this is not, uh, I don't know how that, but brought into this, but Airbnb is not the issue here, by the way, it's, i- it's not, so um, please, let's not even, let's not even go there, please don't even think about that, there's a whole lot more involved with this than the Airbnb situation, and we got that under, we're getting that so much under control in this city, thanks to uh inspectional services and the work they, they do, and believe me, and, and, and Ward Six, um, I've had nothing but uh great help from in- inspectional services and dealing with what we put into place. So, um, folks, uh, first I'm gonna start off with regarding the conservation order conditions, I'm sure it, I'm sure it hasn't been issued, um, signed yet, and it's not finalized, because it can be appealed, either by the neighbors or the, by the DEP, can issue a superseding order of conditions. That's fact. Tonight should not happen, and decision of the commission is not final and binding yet. What are they gonna do with the additional runoff? Roof runoff has not been addressed. The pool is not a necessity, and should be scrapped out of this whole plan. No one has seen or received an order of conditions yet, so we don't know if the flooding issue has been addressed. Nevertheless, we don't even know of what the constant, uh, the, uh, the commission says will work. I'd like to ask, uh, uh, Counselor Fleming, who basically, I, I believe, and I will, I will testify in Land Court, did not follow the uh zoning board uh application when it comes to dealing with the Ward Six Councilor, which has been a constant problem since I've been in office. I need, I would like to hear from just plain and simple, just where the order of condition is.
I'm getting a copy right now.
Yeah, more than simple, and, and then you folks should maybe go over to that if you could, please.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I just wanna finish with, I'm not finishing, I'm not even close.
Okay.
We are sympathetic to the children um situation, the children's situation. You have to try to balance the neighborhood needs. I hate to say it, if they really cared about the kids, they wouldn't live on such a busy street with so much going on. That sounds harsh, yes, it is. Um. Again, the notes I took, everything is vague, they have not finalized, there's so many things that in this, well, the, the architect's not on, and uh, well, we don't know, so how could you folks even render a decision? Now. Which, which is very important, at the ZBA hearing previously, the appellant was told that the board did not support the addition of two bedrooms above the garage. The revised plans still shows these bedrooms. One board member said he would be inclined to approve a carport structure, not a closed garage. The revised plans still show a closed garage with bedrooms above. You folks made it quite clear. The revised plans state that the requirement for distance in the rear yard is not applicable. This is false. The revised plans state that the requirement for distance in the rear is not applicable. The rear yard of four seventy-nine Quincy Short Drive adjoins the side yards of eighty-five Webster Street and eighty-eight Appleton Street. The requirement in resident A areas is twenty-five feet to the property line for a rear yard. The Apple, the, the appellant is calling this a side yard and proposing ten feet to the property line. The, the appellant has not been honest with the neighbors. And when I, I wrote down, they said they were working with the neighbors, that's an absolute false. In fact, the fact that the uh, the attorney did not come to a, a meeting that we set up with the, with the Conservation Committee as a, as a uh, community meeting, which they're supposed to come, come to me, cause, and they didn't, and you, they can say anything they want, but it always happens when uh I'm dealing with um certain folks that are involved here. The, the appellant has not been honest with the neighbors, having originally stated that he was all, he was seeking only to add a two-car garage. The appellant was not honest with the Conservation Commission, telling them that the ZBA only wanted him to add some additional space between his garage and the neighbor's property line. He never mentioned the issue of additional bedrooms being removed in revision, or the question about the type of garage. The appellant's engineer has asserted that there will be no effect on the current flooding and ponding issues which plague this neighborhood in which the city has previously attempted, excuse me, to um fix with a pump and floodgates. Think about that in itself, but as we, as, as, as with any construction project, the engineer really doesn't know what will happen once digging begins. If he is correct, the many affected neighbors will have no recourse but to live with the consequences. But I will say, this will not end if, if this is approved, this will not end in Land Court between what's going on with the craziness with the Conservation Committee, and how uh certain applications aren't followed, as far as it says right on it, to, to be in contact with the ward, the ward council, and that was not the case. I had organized a, a community meeting after a, a conservation meeting. So. All I can say is I appreciate everything that you folks do. This, the problem with water and the fact that the city uh put in these pumping and gates, this is a disaster, this is a disaster for the people that I represent. One person should not be allowed. The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one. I appreciate everything that everybody does, and again, I, I haven't been in front of yous in a while, I wish you all a happy New Year, prosperous New Year, but please, please do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Harris, just so you do know, I do have an order of conditions right in front of me, uh, that was signed the sixth of uh. Mister Harris?
Yes, yes, uh, well, again, I guess, I guess, I guess I don't have to get. I understand, I understand.
I just got, I just got these, they, they came, uh, they, they were signed the sixth.
And I didn't get anything, so that's, that's, you know, so, so, not for nothing, you know, you come in, you, you, you prepare to, to represent your people, and you don't have what ready and ready for me to be able to properly uh represent you folks, the folks that.
You're right, you, you should have.
Uh, but this is, this is consistent with the, like, the people that are, 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 are representing these folks.
So it looks like you and Mister Fleming have a little uh disagreement on the meetings and.
I'm happy to meet with Counselor Harris anytime.
Can I just say, and I don't know, I, I don't know what's going on there, but uh, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, I've heard that line, I think you folks all have heard that line when I've been up here, and the, and, and the, the flames were against a neighborhood project, so I really you folks do what you have to do, I understand what you have to do, but this will not stop tonight, no matter what's decided, if I have to, um, um. Again, it is signed, but there's an appeal period.
Yep.
Um.
At least we just signed the sixth.
Uh, and the, it, it can be, um, it, that could be, uh, whatever, it can be thrown in the trash, I don't know.
Yeah.
Thanks, thank you, it's very frustrating right now, this, this is not good for the neighborhood, it's not good for a lot of people, it's the wrong thing, I'm telling you right now.
As a matter of fact, I got, I gotta re- redo something here, date of public hearing was the sixth, and this was issued today.
And uh, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, proponents, we, we don't have a copy neither, so. I just wanted to say we don't have a copy neither.
Hold on, hold, hold on.
I, I just wanna add, i- i- isn't it that very convenient, I mean, I, there's so many people, I hope there's people, I see Mister, Mister Roderfeld throws, throws his uh, two cents in all the time, and you know what, it's about the people, had nothing to do with Airbnb, and it's about the people, and, and very convenient that it was issued and ready today.
The reason it's issued today is. And sign it, right, right, in the means, right, the members came in and signed it today, and uh, that's how I got a copy.
It didn't get sent out.
Marty.
Yeah, it's not sent out yet.
I just was wondering, and maybe the, the commission can ask this, I, I always thought that the application process to the ZBA recommended reaching out to your counselor, but it's not a requirement, is it a requirement? I, I'd love to know for future.
I, I, I never thought it was a requirement ever, I always saw it as recommendation, call your counselor, get in touch with him, tell him what you're doing.
Yeah.
So, and the commission.
It wouldn't be a bad thing, you know, in, in changing your zoning code, counselor.
Your counselor, right.
In, in changing the zoning code, I know there's been a lot of talk of changing the zoning, some zoning issues coming up, you know, Counselor Harris, it might not be a bad thing if you make that, you know, mandatory, because it's only a recommendation at this point.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't think it's the proper venue to, to, for me to be discussing this.
You know, I, I don't even know.
What I, what I will say, what I will say, if, if I may.
Wait a minute, you're the one pushing this further than, we're talking about something else, we're talking about counselor in a project, your name wasn't brought in this at all, this conversation, at all. So all I said is it looks like you two haven't gotten along or something, that's all I said, period. No, huh? Say again?
That's not the case, but that's, I, I don't.
Okay, good, tell me the case then, Counselor.
Uh, no, there's, there's been uh insinuations that um, uh, Mister Harris was, had not been notified of this particular project, but you know, he indeed was.
I'm saying, I never said this.
Yeah.
So what, what are you looking at me saying, we, we're, we're doing this?
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not referring to you, Mister Akins, that's, that's, that's all I'll say, that's all I'll say.
Alright.
And, and.
These haven't even been. They will be issued.
Ryan Rodel, thank you, I appreciate the, the, and, and that's a great recommendation that should go going forward on the council, but um, but at the bottom of the application, and, and the, um, Jay Duker is there, it, it specifically said, says, you should, you should uh communicate with, if it's communicate or whatever with the ward council, it would save us all this time that you folks are here in front of us, if you could get the neighbors I, in front ahead of time and be able to communicate, with no communication, the whole thing falls apart.
Yeah, and that's, and that was my point, Counselor, I, I didn't want you to think, I, I, I believe, I, I believe it only says recommendation, that's why I was saying, you know, we, we see this all the time where people haven't been effectively communicated, especially in the last year and a half with, with COVID, or two years now, so, so might, might, might benefit you from bringing that up.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you.
Let's pick a request that we could try to move on. We've been doing this for almost an hour now.
Exactly, exactly. All right, uh, is there any more questions? No, you're not gonna get a speak yet. Wait a minute, I'm talking to the board. Anyone else have any other questions here?
Can I just have a clarification, Marty? We, so we have a side yard setback, though, and, and special permit flood line.
Correct, and, and, and it, and it says side yard setback, but it's a corner lot, correct?
Yeah.
Right, Mr. Duke?
There's no rear.
No rear, yeah, right.
There's nothing else, so it's a dimensional for the side yard setback and.
Right, and it, it, correct, correct.
Okay.
That's a relief. And it, and, and what the board talked about is a little more green space. Tear up some of the, tear up some of that. Let's check, make sure that pool's okay, then went to the conservation. I didn't read this yet. I just got this, this, this came.
Mr. Chairman, how, how long is the appeal period on the order of conditions?
Conservation's ten days. Ten days conservation and the date of issuance, and that's not issued yet. I just got it, this, this will be issued, I don't know. I don't know with people being out sick, I don't know. Could be a couple of days.
All right, thank you.
Right, and then our decision, they have 20 days from the day of filing, correct? Correct, right. So, those are, those are, uh, what I will do is make this, try to wrap it up there, Mr. Sebey. Go ahead, speak.
Just, uh, to follow the counselor. Unfortunately, he said the applicant is not honest. Honestly, he is not honest, and I will explain why. I called him maybe 10 or more than 10 times before we start this process, begging him, you know, emails, calls, just to set appointment with the neighbors. And he knows that. When he came to, to side visit with the conservation commission, I, I asked him, why did not you follow? He said, you know, I am busy these days. Please do conservation, you know? Uh, uh, please do meeting. And I myself start with the neighbor. Before I start this process, I myself knock their door and say, we are neighbors for eight, nine years now. Let's solve this one. I need car garage. They got mad because the, the view. I swear to God, they mention only the view, nothing else, you know? Now he, he said, we did not sit together? This is very weird. Second thing, he was the one who, who brought the Airbnb in the, uh, conservation meeting. The, that meeting is documented, you can check who brought that point. You, please go and check that meeting, last meeting for conservation.
I gotta check this, I gotta merge.
Yeah, so that's it. Nobody else talk about Airbnb. He was the one who start that, that point. And again, I called him many times, I sent him emails, he did not. You know, so that is my point.
I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, one more point. We follow the law. Before we start, we have to send to whole neighborhood letters that we are doing this project. And the law asks us to have it within 300 feet, right? Diameter. Mr. Harris, in addition to that, he sent mails to the whole neighborhood, not only with 300 feet diameter. I swear, my family received four mails, he, by mistake, you know, he doesn't know I am the applicant. One for myself, one for my wife, one for my daughter, and one even for my disabled daughter.
All right, all right, all right, all right. A couple of minutes to wrap it up. I think, you know, we can't get into he said, she said. It's getting, it's getting, it's getting really. It is, it's getting bizarre. So, does anyone else have any other questions?
Are we doing questions, Mr. Chairman? Are we actually opening up the people who are, who are opposed or undecided?
That's what I'm bringing up in, in one minute.
Okay, thank you.
And, and then we're gonna, after this, we're gonna take a 10 minute break. Uh, you guys can continue, Mr. Kavas, without me, I got an emergency, I gotta get on the street. Uh, it's my grandkid. Uh, so, uh, let's go back. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Raise your hands, give us a wave. Opposed or undecided?
We have, uh, Carrie, followed by Gus, and then Karen Blumquist.
Carrie, take an oath, please.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not to, but the truth, I hope you God.
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm opposed to this, uh, project, um, you know, I'm very sympathetic to, to the needs of my neighbor. Uh, you know, as Mohammed said, they were, they've been great neighbors and you're not gonna find anyone more sympathetic than a special ed teacher. But as a special ed teacher, I don't have the resources to hire a lawyer, a high priced, big shot lawyer, uh, you know, to defend my, uh, well-being here. This is causing me a lot of stress. This has been going on, as Mohammed said, for many months, and I'm not the one that brought this on. I'm just trying to maintain a level of, of living here that we're used to. And my neighbor is trying to double the size of his house to the point where I'm gonna be able to reach out my window and touch his house. This is not Dorchester. The living space above the garage is outrageous. I don't know how many people are gonna be living next door with that amount of living space. Where are those cars gonna go? There's certainly gonna be more than two cars, they're gonna be here on Webster Street, which floods constantly, constantly. This street floods. It was flooded almost all of last week. So, I, and it wasn't even raining, it was astronomical high tides and the street was flooded three days last week. That flooding does not affect these two houses on the end of the street, it doesn't go down that far. So they have no concerns with that because it doesn't affect them. It affects everyone else on Webster Street. And, uh, um, you know, I don't know why I'm forced into this position of having to attend the conservation committee, these meetings. It's like a part-time job for me, and I did not bring this on. I am trying to maintain a level of living that, that we paid for. I would not have bought this house if there was gonna be this enormous monstrosity next door. So, I mean, I think, I appreciate you all hearing me out. I thank you for letting me speak. I know that we're trying to keep this concise. I think you can tell I could have a lot more to say about this. And I'm certainly sensitive to the needs of my neighbor, but please, this is not the right project for this street, for this neighborhood. It's way too big. Um, and I just would ask you to please consider the points I made. I'm gonna be concise and I'll, I'll stop right there, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who's next?
Username Gus, followed by Karen Blumquist.
Do you both, do you both raise your hand and just nod and say, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not to, but the truth? Yes, yes, Gus. Yes, Karen, yes, thank you, Karen.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Gus, Gus, who's up? Gus, go ahead. Name and address for the, for the record, please.
Katie Carey, 85 Webster Street on the abutter.
Okay.
Property. Um, a lot of things have come out through this. Um, my husband was the one that just spoke. I think it is, it definitely been detrimental to our family that we are spending so much time doing this. We're only doing it because we're passionate about the house we live in. And I think he made a good point. I feel like I could put a cup of coffee out that window and they're gonna be able to put the sugar in it. I don't think that's right. I think it's way too close. I disagree that it being a corner lot because I do think that is the back of their house. Um, and there's supposed to be 25 feet between us. And yes, we did have an addition put on this house. I was not the owner. My parents put on an addition so that my disabled brother could live in this house. That was supposed to be so that it was all on one, one level with a, um, a ramp in the back so that he could actually leave the home as well. So I, I have a good understanding, both professionally and personally, for disabilities. Um, I do think that, um, after him, them putting on this addition, they realized that this was not the house for him. So he moved. So I think that's another piece that is important. Sometimes it's not the right place. Um, he couldn't handle the wind and the rain and the flooding to be able to go from in this house to his car. I think that's a really valid point considering since the last time I proposed all of this and I had 13 sessions of pictures, now I have 15. It has flooded two more times since then. And it is just, it's getting worse and worse. It is going beyond their driveway when we have it now at snow, and it's definitely even longer than that. It goes out to the point where I told the water department, I would put out cones to avoid people coming down it because the flooding, when people go through it, spews all over our cars, our houses, and causes problems with our grass because the salt water will not allow the grass to continue to grow. So there's more than just the offshoot of my five neighbors that have to, you know, drain their basements throughout these situations. Um, there's a lot of concerns. Yes, some is water. And yes, there was, when they first came to me about this, I did bring up the view because that was kind of like, wait, you're gonna put a huge garage there? That, that doesn't make a lot of sense. Like, we live right here and you have this 360 view of the water and we have a little bit, but we're still a step back. So part of it is about the view. Um, I'm not gonna deny that, but that was not the biggest frustration for us. The biggest frustration continues to be that we're on a flood plain and we continue to fight this battle with extra drainage spouts coming off my house. They go all the way to the middle of the backyard sometimes so that it doesn't drain our, our.
I gotta, I gotta, I gotta hold you right there. Michael, I have to leave, I just got another.
All right. I hope everything goes well, I apologize.
I'll be back in 10 minutes.
Uh, Karen, you're next. You have to unmute yourself, I think. We can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm, I'm Karen Blumquist, 88 Appleton Street. I'm the other abutter in the rear of 479 Quincy Shore Drive. I'm not an engineer, I'm not a zoning expert. But if you look at the drawings that the appellant has, he shows a front door on 479 Quincy Shore Drive. That would suggest that where he is putting his garage is in the rear of the house. The dimensional table say 25 feet to the property line. He's asking for far less than that and calling it a side yard. That's the separate issue for us. The issue for us is water. It's not just Webster Street, it's Appleton as well. We all struggle with this. We, it's a known condition. The city knows about it. They send people out to inspect that pump every month. I watch them out my kitchen window. They pay careful attention, they do the best that they can. I spent a lot of my career in construction. I know about unintended consequences of digging in the ground. I do not believe that the engineer can assure us that there will not be further issues with the water table as a result of this. We are all sympathetic to the appellant's family concerns, but there are a number of us that also have to be concerned about our families and our properties when we ask you to take our concerns into consideration as well. Thank you.
Welcome. Anyone else opposed or undecided? First call, second call, last call, part of the hearing over. Uh, members of the board, here's, uh, what I think. Again, it's an awkward situation since Marty was just able to leave. Uh, we're done. You can use it. Uh, so I'm gonna suggest this. Since that conservation commission, uh, decision has not been read by anybody, uh, I'm gonna suggest that we poke, pull this off one more week and let Marty be here to run this thing the way it should be done since he put all this work into this. And that will satisfy the ward council, he can get to see what it is and he can read it. And the neighbors could get, hopefully get a copy of it. And, uh, and where'd you go? Ed Fleming, you're gone. Anyway, that's my, that's my take on this whole, oh, there you are, Rob, I'm sorry. Uh, that's my take on this. So what I'm saying to you, Rob, is that I'm suggesting that we take another week, two weeks to, uh, calm everybody down and then we can come back to this.
And can, can we all get a copy of the order of conditions?
Why? When have we ever had to see those?
Well, we don't have to really see those. But if the, if the member wants to see them.
I'll see that, I'll. I'll see that the board, uh, gets a copy and I'll have a copy, will be uploaded to this property address that can be viewed by anybody. Uh, that should be uploaded by tomorrow afternoon, the, uh, copy of the order of conditions.
And I also, Commissioner Duke, can you just maybe clarify for some people on here that the corner lot, it's not the appellate or the, it's not the applicant that is, you know, claiming that this is a side yard setback? That's how we view every corner lot in the city of Quincy?
That's correct. It's, our ordinance defines, uh, that there is no rear yard on a corner lot, that, uh, you have two fronts and the rest of the yards are considered side yards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And if I may, if I may just speak on, on the request of Mr. Kavas is to, to continue this for a couple of weeks. Certainly this is unprecedented, uh, um, to be able to review, the members review an order of conditions. I don't think it's been done. Um, you know, quite honestly. Certainly the commission, uh, you know, has their, uh, their authority and, and their obligations and, and their expertise in reviewing these matters. Um, and to make sure, uh, the proposal is built, you know, certainly within the regulations of DEP and FEMA, as, as she has indicated. Um, and they wouldn't order, they wouldn't issue these order of conditions without us doing that. Uh, can these be appealed? Certainly. You know, they certainly can, you know, both by, by neighbors as well as a superseding order by, by DEP. We understand that. Um, I just don't, I don't know what, what good it will do to continue this matter for a couple of weeks.
Well, Counselor, point one I got to you, it's only four members now. I just want you to realize, it's only four members hearing this right now.
No, I, I understand that and they, they, since I'm requesting a variance and, uh, um, you know, I certainly need the, the four votes as well. Um, I'd have to look to see who was actually in attendance at the hearing on, on 11/23 as well to make sure where I'd be in compliance in that respect. Um, um, I wasn't sure if there was gonna be a, um, a, a break and then come back to this particular hearing until Mr. Akins could come back, but, uh, he may not be back. So I understand that. So it looks like we're, we're probably between a rock and a hard place and probably have to agree to a continuance for a couple of weeks, uh, because of, um, well, sort of a quorum issue at this point.
At this point, it is, so. So board members, what do you think? Do I have a motion for something?
Well, I think, I think you're right on. I mean, I think Marty heard the whole thing. Marty was beginning, you know, I mean, I, I, I'd be remiss to try and take a vote without him, so I agree with your counsel.
Yeah.
I'm calling you counsel. Well, you are.
All right, well, Marty's not gonna like me, but, uh.
Mr. Chairman. Regarding case number, uh, ZBA 2184, make a motion to postpone the hearing until the 25th of January.
On a motion seen, that, someone wanted to second that?
Second.
A motion seen on all favor?
Aye.
Paul, would you on favor? Mr. Duke, can you give us a roll, roll call, Counselor?
Yes, roll call. Michael Vass?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Ryan Raydell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
That's four votes, it's continued, the matter's continued to January 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your time.
All right, as we go forward without, oh, uh, Jeff, we're gonna need Jeff, Jeffrey Franklin.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that went back to, uh.
I have to sit this one out, Mike, because it is my direct neighbor, so.
Okay, all right. So, uh.
You'd have to go with four.
Go with four again. Uh, let's see. Case number 21-93, Paula Glenn for a variance to create a one level room addition to get a shower in a downstairs bath on the front of number three, Waldmetz Street. Uh, is the, uh, the applicant or representative here? Hi. I believe you have to, uh, unmute yourself.
Um, I'm under Shannon Boylan, but I'm Paula Glenn. It's my niece.
But again, we only have four members.
Okay.
And you're asking for a variance, so if one of us votes against it, you're out. So you have the option of coming back in a couple of weeks. Uh, I'm sorry that Mr. Akins had to leave us.
Um, no.
Whoa, 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 wait a second, hold everything. Act what I just said.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman? Can't hear you. Have to unmute yourself.
Well, I think it's a moot point now, so she can go forward. He's there.
Yeah, I'm here, I'm back, sorry, guys.
All right.
Grandkid had no ride. Car broke down and. Wasn't good, huh? No, that's fine, they're in the other room.
Okay, so, uh.
Where are we?
Ms. Glenn, we're, oh, we just started 2193. And Ms. Glenn here is going to, uh, give us her, uh, presentation.
Someone don't want.
I don't really have a presentation. I just, I uploaded everything and I gave you guys everything. So we, we are just looking to add a small addition off the side of the house, the side yard. I don't, you know, I'm not an expert, I don't, my architect's not.
I don't, you know, I'm not an expert. I don't, my architect's not here.
You don't have to be an expert. That's fine.
Okay.
Mr. Raydell, you're, you're sitting out?
I'm sitting out. Frankels.
Okay. All right, great. Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Vass.
But tell us, tell us, tell us what you want to do.
So we basically offer the kitchen. We just want to add. A room, like another room to go into, and then we already have a downstairs bathroom. And we just want to add a um, downstairs shower to that.
So it's a half bath now?
Yeah, yep. Yep. And then the existing um, living room, we just want to add, want to uh, take the porch down. We already have an enclosed porch. We want to take that down and just extend it out to, to the existing um, framework. So that it's like four feet.
Okay, okay, all right. Mr. Chairman, are you back or you want me to continue?
No, you, you might as well continue. You said, you said.
Stop the trouble. Okay, thank, thank you very much, uh, Ms. Glenn. Does anybody want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Mr. Harris?
We have a few hands. There's Counsel Harris, Citizen Rutherford, and Mr. Reddick. Who would you like to start with?
Mr. Harris, are you there? Unmute yourself.
Right, all right. Thank you. Um. This, this project is a perfect example of why um, you notify um. The ward counselor because you get a feel of what the neighbors. Uh, around uh, the, the, of the abutters. Um, how they feel. I have not received one. Um, one call, one email uh, on this project uh, uh, against. And this is a good project. I've seen it. Um, just, just by the fact that uh. Um, the, um, the Glenns, uh, they, they're just regular folks that are just doing a regular thing to. Better their uh, make their life a little easier. So. Um, with that, um, I ask that you uh, approve this uh, project uh, that, that's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor. Brian Raydell?
Yeah, um, do I have to take an oath? I don't even know, because.
Yes, if it was a speech, you could raise their hand because I'll trust you all.
Yes, I do. Uh, I know, I, I, I know that Glenn, Paula used to babysit me as a child, so I've known him my whole life. Uh, it's, it's about the only place they can go off the house. Uh, it's the only, you know, tangible option really to, to try and expand. They got two grown boys, so. Um, I think it'll be a nice project. I think they'll do a good job with it, so.
Thank you, thank you. Citizen Rutherford? Unmute yourself. Go ahead, John.
John Rutherford, sixty-two Grandwall Road, just want to throw in my two cents. I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence?
No. Any correspondence? No correspondence.
Anyone opposed or undecided? Anyone want to speak? Who's opposed or undecided? Raise your hand or. Use the, one of those buttons.
Lots of hands, Mr. Chairman.
No hands? First call, second call, third call, call that part of the hearing over. Uh, I think, Mr. Chairman, it's a wonderful project.
Yeah, I think, I think it's very nicely. I think it's going to help the family out. You listen to the counselor. I like what he said that uh. You know, they get ahold of him before they did it and makes things so much easier. I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Frankel?
I've known the family for a long time. I know they do a great job. I am entirely in favor. The only question I had is what were the prayers for relief? So we do the order properly? Or we can just reference inconsistent with the plans?
So just grant the variance, which is why it is. Mr. Himmel?
I'm in favor of it. I really like that little eyebrow. So, nice project.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, also in favor.
Okay. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, why don't you give us a motion?
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Regarding case number twenty-one dash ninety-three Paula Glenn for a variance to create a one level room addition. And add a shower in the downstairs bathroom, the premises number three Wombach Street. I rec, I make a motion to grant the requested variance. Second.
We're about to see it done. Well, um, have a roll call.
Roll call vote, uh, Michael Colvias?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes, sir.
Ja, John Himmel?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Absolutely.
And Marty Akins?
Yes.
Both passes.
Good. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks. Very much appreciate it. Thank you. So if I get off now, am I gonna be rude?
What's that?
Am I gonna be rude if I get off now?
No, you can.
All right, thank you.
Marty, I have to step out for a minute. All right?
All right. You got it. New business, ZBA twenty-one ninety-four.
Okay, okay, okay. You're back.
Goodwin Barlington LLC for a special prime advantage for moving existing commercial motor vehicle. Repair facility and construct a new twenty-two unit residential building premises number one seventeen Beale Street. The applicant or representative here?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, uh, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming on behalf of Goodwin Barlington LLC. Uh, this, this project uh, involves a property at one seventeen Beale Street in Wallaston. Uh, it's, it's located in the business C zoning district. And it's also included in the new Wallaston overlay district that's being considered by the city council. Uh, there's quite a bit of interference, Mr. uh, Chairman. I don't know if you.
Welcome to Zoom.
Um, I'm also joined by David Freed of, of Two Architects, who's the architect, and David will speak a little bit on the uh, the architectural plans. And Michael Joyce of Joyce Consulting is here as well. Um, and I'm joined by the applicant um, himself, Mr. Kevin Gorm, who is the principal of the LLC. Uh, and I know that Mr. uh, Abden, Jim Abden is here. Uh, Mr. Abden operates the automotive facility. At the site and has for a number of years. A very well-respected businessman in the city of Quincy and um, uh, who's decided to uh, it's time. He's uh, he's put his, his effort in and his time in and it's time to move on. And this is a great opportunity to kind of uh, redevelop. Like, in a way that's going to be um, probably a little bit more um, uh, in conformity with some of the residential uh, neighborhood in the rear of the site. If I can, uh, just briefly, just highlight a few things. First of all, this is a, as I indicated, it's a business C-zoned parcel. Um, it was when the uh, the city council um, entertained and decided to entertain the overlay district, they included this parcel. In the Wallaston overlay district. Uh, with an understanding and an eye towards the redevelopment of this particular parcel as well. It's a fifteen thousand one hundred and thirty-six, uh, seven square foot parcel. And as I said, operated by Mr. Abden for Abden Auto. Um, it's located very close proximity to the Wallaston MBTA and obviously the Wallaston Business District. Uh, it's a great opportunity to for redevelopment. Um, Mr. Gorm is proposing to construct a new twenty-two unit. Multi-family residential building with garage parking under the vehi, under the building. Uh, the department of the site uh, allows for the parking to be um, uh, installed in a garage under the building as it off Arlington Street. Um, and therefore no, no access to and from the, 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 uh, the site or the building. Uh, from uh, Beale Street other than um, a pull-off. For delivery vehicles and a couple of visitor parking spaces. And the building will be four stories in height. Uh, from Beale Street, um, and then accessible, as I indicated, from Arlington Street to the, to the garage. Um, obviously, there's no, there's very few and very limited um, drainage control measures right now in the site because it's an old property. In fact, this is the oldest gas station uh, in the area and it has some historical significance and Mr. um. Mr. Freed will talk about the, the preservation of some of the architectural, um, historic architectural features of the building. Um, in the design of the new property. Um. Uh, but these, but Mr. Joyce um, it, um, has designed um. Drainage control measures now that will deal with the drainage and the runoff of the site. Will tie into the news, the city's uh, system um, on Arlington Street and provide for um. Level of drainage controls that don't exist today and certainly with some features that will. Um, uh, ensure that any contamination on the site will not be interfered with or obstructed during the construction or during uh, of, of water runoff of the site. What we're seeking today is a special permit. To allow for the conversion of the business B's uh, site into residential. And also for variances from the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. Uh, this matter, as you know, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, is first required to go to the planning board. We've gone to the planning board for site plan review. Uh, that underwent uh, a number of hearings. And also a significant review of all of the city departments, including the DPW department, but also peer review. Uh, peer review addressed all the drainage and engineering controls as well as traffic control measures. Um, this was reviewed by the city's traffic engineer as well. And uh, contributions have been um, have been agreed upon in the planning board process. Uh, towards um, issues related to drainage and, and traffic control measures. Uh, we think it's a great project. Um, it was very well received by the planning department, by the planning board. Um, and overall by the neighbors. Uh, I reached out uh, to uh, Counsel Ian Kane at the very beginning of this process. Um, and he, and that, he, he knows that notice was shared with all the neighbors. And there was very little concern raised by any of the neighbors in the area. Um, I think a lot of people feel like this is a nice use, reuse of the site. So with that, if I can turn this over to David Freed and a lot, and ask that uh, the host allow Mr. Freed to share his plans. We can walk through those architecturals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming.
You're all set.
You see a banner on the big screen up there, huh?
David, I think you're muted.
David, you're not getting paid.
Chairman, he may need to check with his microphone or something. I do have him unmuted.
All right. You all set now, Dave?
So now he's muted.
Speak, speak up, maybe get closer to the mic. I don't know.
I think he's having a mic issue of some sort. He is unmuted. Just can't hear.
Can, can you speak up, get closer? Can you hear me?
He can probably hear, but he needs to know he's got a mic problem.
You got a mic problem? Yeah, can't hear you. David, can I unmute?
It continues, Mr. Chairman. You can use a phone to call in.
All right. Uh, yeah.
David, if you could put up the plans and then I could just walk through them at least while you're, while you're trying to figure out your mic problem. So um, so these are, the, this is uh, the, obviously uh, views of the site. Uh, you can see uh, views of the site from uh, Beale Street. Um, directly on Beale, looking up Arlington on the, on the, uh, lower left corner. Um, as the, the, uh, the, the, uh, the parking lot is raised actually by a structured fa, a structured foundation and a wall, as you can see. But the, with the area where the cars are on Arlington Street are all, is also part of the site. And you can also see the site in, on the corner of Arlington and, and um, and Beale Street as well. David, if you could flip to the next. This shows existing conditions, plans. Um, with the building, uh, as you, as you know, right now, the, the um. The, the front of the site is essentially a, a paved parking lot. Uh, on Beale Street and the building is set back from that. It's um, um, in the uh, in the, kind of in the middle of the site. Uh, towards the um, towards the uh, the, the left side of the site. To the next picture, Dave? Let me see if I can um.
You take control of that, Mr. Fleming, maybe?
Yeah, Dave, maybe you can take it off and let me see if I can pull up the plan myself.
Houston, we got a problem.
All right, here we go. All right, so, so um, let me just walk through the plans. So. We could see, you could see, from this, you can see the site plan. As I indicated, it has um. Paved parking in the front of the site, also along Arlington. Arlington, the Arlington's um, parking is um, is actually. Uh, created in a way that it's, there's a structured wall that's, that allows it, it raises the um. It raises the parking lot to be on even uh, topography with the building. Um, and uh, as you know, it's, it's used for automotive repair. These are again the site, um, is um. Different areas and different views of the site. Um, the um, the new building will provide for garage parking under the building. It will provide for access from, from Arlington Street up here. Um, so there'll be no direct access um, to the, to the garage from Beale Street. Um, the uh, the, 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 uh, the front of um, Beale or the building on, at, on Beale, on the, on the, on Beale Street will be the entranceway, the pedestrian entranceway. And the um, particular entranceway into the garage will be here in a garage off Arlington Street. Um, the um, the first floor and uh, and other, other floors will have similar uh, setup. The first floor, however, will have a bike room uh, for storage of bikes for the tenants with the lobby entrance off Beale Street. Uh, this driveway area on um, that's shown on Beale Street. Is for the purposes of providing um, uh, drop-off and pickup for, for residents of the building, but also for deliveries of packages to the building. So that vehicles uh, that are delivering to the building will be not, not be stopping on Beale Street, which is too busy to do so. It will also provide a couple of small, of visitor spaces off Beale Street. And then the footprint of the each, of each floor will be very similar. The first floor will be a little bit different because it will provide, as I said, the bike room. Uh, off the lobby entranceway and, and stairway area a, as well as a fitness facility on the first floor in the front. And then the units above, and then the floor plans of blood will be very similar in size for a total of twenty-two. Uh, twenty-two units. Um. And then with, there'll be a roof deck provided on the top level to take advantage of the views because of the high proximity of the site on the top of. On the, on, kind of on the top of Beale Street, it will have views out to the um, towards the ocean and certainly towards the Boston um, area. Um, this kind of shows an architectural style and design of the building. It's a very attractive building. Um, and what, what um, and what um, Mr. Freed has done is he's, he's actually utilized. Uh, a similar style brick. Um, in the, in the lower level of the building and he's been able to um, to, uh, there's a, there's some fixtures that are actually on the. Um, the uh, the gas station building that he's actually going to mimic in the, in the, in the brick of the building. Uh, and that was a discussion we actually had with the historic uh, commission folks of the city. Because of their research about the historic nature of this, um, of this building as the oldest gas station in the area. Uh, you can see here the building at this level being uh, from Arlington Street and as you can see, the Arlington Street garage. Entrance, entrance into the um, into the garage of the facility. Uh, this shows the rear of the building in the back and this is another view from the side angle. But as you can see, the topography of the site. Uh, as the, as you go down Arlington Street allows for that uh, garage. Uh, level to be, uh, to be built right into the um, into the, uh, into the side without adding any, any, any additional height. Uh, for the building on Beale Street. These are the uh, these are the cast meda, the cast stone medallions that you can see in more detail. That will be mimicked on the, on the new uh, uh, lower uh, level of the building. Really just to kind of remember that um, that historic nature of the building. And this gives you a good um, a good view of what the building will look like when completed. Um, with the materials that will, that have been shown. will, that have been chosen by, by, by Mr. Freed. But it's a, it's a beautiful new building. It's great access to public transportation and the, and the amenities of the downtown Wallaston district. We think it'll be well, very well received and, and by the community.
We can get rid of those electric lines and look better, huh?
Yeah, wouldn't that be beautiful? I know. Well, you know, I think, I think interesting that you point that out though, Mr. Akins, because as you know, the, the city's targeted the, the entire Newport Avenue block as a block to be taken and for redevelopment and chances are when that happens, there'll be quite a bit of additional work done to the area, but to beautify it. But yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be a great, a great improvement as well. Mr. Joyce is here to answer any questions that the board may have about drainage. But again, this has been reviewed by DPW and the, the peer review. And we've responded to all the comments and concerns that were raised, or Mr. Joyce did, and Mr. Freed did. And we think that based on that and the recommendation of the board, we ask that you also approve this project.
What you have, what is the building? I see the brick that you got on the bottom. What's the rest of the building there?
I wish I could, I wish I could tell you exactly. I think it's probably hardy plaque materials in both the panels and the panels on this. As you can see, there's going to be, there's going to be siding, hardy plank siding as well. They're similar, similar to a lot of the other new structures, Mr. Akins.
No, I, it's a pretty building.
It's beautiful.
Great job.
Yeah, lap side, lap siding panels is what David said.
Nice. Mr. Cavazos, any questions?
I have none at this time. I do like the idea of having that driveway in the front. That's really.
Yeah, it's cool.
Important with all these FedEx trucks everywhere.
Everywhere, right. You're exactly right. Everything, everything today, people buying stuff. It's only going to get worse because they're realizing they don't have to go shopping.
I have no questions.
Right.
Mr. O'Brien? Anything? Okay. Mr. Ray Dell? No, Brian's not.
Right, I'm out.
Yeah, are you out on this, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I'm out.
That's what I thought. All right.
Sorry, I was muted. I muted myself when my kids were yelling in the background.
That was that noise.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Fleming. I didn't mean to interrupt your initial presentation.
Oh, that was you. I, that's.
Yeah, I'm the culprit. Did they, the only question I had, and it's, I don't think it matters in terms of approval at all. I'm just more curious. Did they give you like any conditions in terms of the firehouse for construction purposes?
No, I, I think that we, we are, we prepared a, a construction management plan and kind of with the understanding that we'll continue to work cooperatively with the fire department, but also through the traffic engineer to ensure there's no disturbance. But yeah, that's, it's a great point. And I think that, that, that's how, that was the condition that was added, that it would be a construction management plan that will be submitted.
I figured, I mean, I was, like I said, I was more curious than anything.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Hamel?
I really like the Arlington Street access for the parking that keeps it off of Beale Street. And I really like the fact that they're saving those cool old stone medallions.
I think it's nice, too. Yeah.
I think those are new, aren't they? Aren't they copies you're putting on?
I'm not sure if we're preserving the original ones. If there's an ability to do that, I will certainly try to do so. But, but.
I thought they were going to be casted just like.
I, I, yeah, but I think that we'll, we'll, if not, we'll try to mimic that so that it, it has that same appearance.
Yeah, that is pretty cool.
It is.
I like the project. Thank you. I was hoping it was that horrible one on the corner, but.
Mr. Frankel?
I have no questions. Nice project.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor at this time? First call? Second call? Anybody?
Citizen Rotifel.
Citizen Rotifel, you're up. Citizen Rotifel?
Just two cents, John.
I'm back. I only got one cent for this one. Okay. But, no, I'm in favor of this. You know, this is where the, the new growth, I mean, it, it's funny how like in Wallaston, in certain areas of the city, we're putting all this new growth, but we need new growth spread equally throughout the city, I think. I'm not sure why some people who live in some areas think they're entitled to not have development in their areas where other people welcome the development and welcome new neighbors to the city. So this is an area where once they pass that walls and redevelopment plan, you wouldn't be able to stop it anyway. That area's been run down for a long time. And this is going to be great. So I'm in favor of this. And I just want to say that I'm, I'm also still a big fan of Counselor Harris. I don't know why he's mad, but I mean, I mean, I'm a supporter. Check the.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, but I mean, I'm also a supporter. I like the Flemings too. So I mean, I mean, happy Martin Luther King Day and can't we all get along?
Okay, thank you, John. Anyone else? Speak in favor. Last call? Call up, party hearing closed. Correspondents? There is, there's a letter of correspondence somewhere. No, it's not. Keep it going there. No correspondence. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call?
Not seeing any hands, Mr. Chairman.
Second call? Third call? Call up, party hearing closed. I think it's a beautiful building. I think it's, it's going to look really, really, really nice. I, I really do. I think it's, you did quite a, quite a job with that. Hope it looks as nice as this. Set of plans that I have. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavazos?
I too will be voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hamel?
Yeah, I'm absolutely in favor.
And Mr. Frankel?
I agree with you, Marty. It's one of the nicer projects I've seen. And if it looks like the pictures, it's going to be terrific.
And Mr. Ray Dell?
Yeah, I'm also in favor.
Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, amendment number 21-94, Goodwin Ballington LLC for a special permit variance to remove the existing commercial motor vehicle repair facility and construct a new 22-unit residential building on the premises number 117 Beale Street and make a motion to grant relief requested.
Second.
Under motion? Seeing none. Commissioner, can we take a roll of call vote?
Yeah, Mike Cavazos?
Yes.
Brian Ray Dell?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
And Marty Akins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Gentlemen.
Thank you very much. And I believe, I agree. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful building. I think Mr. Freed did a great job and he apologizes for the mix up on his mic. But I told him his pictures did all the talking, so.
Pictures did all the talking. He only gets half paid tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Further on to tonight's agenda. Council is up again. Virtual Capital Group LLC for various special permit floodplain, construct a new side-by-side duplex site building on the premises 599 C Street. See African a representative. Counselor, you're up.
Lucky for you, gentlemen, you have me for the rest of the night. How about that? You know, I, I'm here again on the, on behalf of the Alpikin, Virtual Capital LLC regarding this proposal that was brought before you a few months ago for 599 C Street. It seems to me that this has been a, been a matter that's been discussed by the board for, for a little while now with a number of different proposals being shared with the board. I'm, I'm joined by my clients, Dmitry Shangin and Dmitry Shoshinsky, and also James Bailey, the architect, and Mitch Malansky, the site engineer. The last time we were before this board, we made a very similar proposal, but, but far larger. And I think that based on the comments that Mr. Akins raised, that, that the neighbors raised, we, we've, my clients have gone back to the drawing board, made significant revisions to the plans and are now presenting a proposal that we hope will now, will, will be responsive to the, to the concerns that the board raised. Just very briefly, this is a, this is a site that actually is a 4,886 square foot parcel of land. Zone Residence B, so it allows for multifamily use, although it's not, not sized appropriately and therefore requires variances from this board. And we're seeking to, to construct again a side-by-side duplex style building with, with parking on the ground level and then residential living above on the second and third floors. The building is the same height that was proposed before, but, but quite a bit smaller in total overall size. And it provides for what I think is was most concern of the, of the board and of the neighbors, which was setback from the abutting properties. The setbacks have been increased from 5.75 on the side now to 10.25 on each side. The parking is still provided under the building. But now it's done by way of tandem spaces, both front and back, so that the storage area under the building has been eliminated. And now the entire lower level is garage. The footprint of the living area has been reduced from 1448 square feet to 1,189 square feet. So a total, a total reduction of, of over 500 square feet of living area. And it's created through the driveway, unobstructed space for two visitor parking spaces on either side of the driveway. And importantly, in the floodplain district, it's increased the open space from 1597 to 2270. So an increase of 673 square feet. So if I may, ask the host to allow Mr. Jim Bailey to, to share the, his screen so that he can share the plans. You're all, you're all set, Mr. Red? Thank you.
Okay, can everybody see these plans?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. First off, thanks, Ed, for doing a great job. I think you pretty much covered everything. You might, you guys barely even need me, but I'll, give you a little bit more information. If you don't remember this project, this is like, I think, our third time. The biggest concerns were the side setbacks. We didn't completely go back to the drawing board, but the concept is similar. It's side-by-side duplex. We were just able to shave off about three to five feet on the sides. If you remember before, the parking was side-by-side with storage behind it. So now it's tandem. So the, the old building stepped at the end of the garage. So we had five feet at the garage and I think it was about seven or so beyond that and then up above. So now we have a consistent 10-foot-three, the full length of the building all the way up. And I think that was, that kind of addresses the biggest concern to the abutting neighbors that were worried about the narrow side setback. So just going through the plans, this parking on the ground floor with a parking court in the front, has a turnaround area and two guest parking spaces. Going through plans, the second floor is, so it's side-by-side mirrored. It's just living, dining, kitchen, powder room, coat room. This is where you'd enter at the top of the stairs coming down from below. We did narrowing it up, we did have to reduce from three bedroom units to two bedroom units. So instead, there's just a bedroom at the, the front and the back, two bathrooms, mechanical laundry as well. And we are keeping the, the roof hatches and roof decks on the roof as well. These are just kind of sections cut from showing the parking below, living space on floors two and three with the roof deck above. I think really that's kind of, kind of it. The design really hasn't changed. We're keeping the same materials, balconies on the front. We are increasing open space, which helps. We didn't need relief, even in the last presentation. I think we met the minimum, but we have even more open space now, you know, shrinking the building footprint. So, yeah, I think that we've kind of addressed all the concerns. So we're hoping that this new design, you know, you guys can grant the relief for it.
Not notified.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And, and I, and we did reach out to Counselor McCarthy and we, and I know there was an effort made to reach out to, to Lillian next door. We didn't have contact with the other neighbor and I apologize for that. But I'm hopeful that this responded to those concerns. And I know, I could see that Will is here. That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman. You're on mute, I believe.
He wasn't a minute ago.
Which is actually okay.
No, I was fine. When I leaned on that, I did it. Oh. Oh, I must have leaned on it when I was fixing these plans. I didn't know that. But really, very, very, very nice. I like that. And they're looking for this, this sort of unit down on Shea Street, I think, too. You should talk to them, to the architects and sell us plans to them. But very nice. I really do. I think that's very nice. They get a piece of water. They got nice side setbacks. The neighbors, you know, they won't start throwing sugar at them. They might start talking to them and be friends. So I think it's a great job. They did an excellent job. In two bedrooms each. I know, I know it hurts a little, but let me tell you, that's going to be a nice place for people to live and enjoy it. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Cavazos?
Yes, I too am. Well, let me just say this. I have no questions.
Okay. Where am I here? Mr. Ray Dell?
No questions at this time.
All right, Mr. Frankel?
No questions at this time.
Hamel?
No questions.
Questions. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Favor this project? Citizen Rotifel, you have your hand up?
No hands.
Third call? Call up, party hearing closed. No correspondence. Is there anyone opposed? No correspondence. Or anyone opposed or undecided of this project? First call? Second call? Oh, anybody?
Not seeing any hands.
Gone. Third call? Call up, party hearing closed. I think it's a very nice job and I, and I think he did everything that I've asked him to. And, and I think what the board did, shrink this down, make a nice project. And he really did. That's going to be nice. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Bass?
Yeah, I'm voting in favor too. I'm very happy. You know, I first saw this coming back. I said, oh, no, here we go again.
Here we go again.
Actually, it's, they did a very good job.
They did. Mr. Ray Dell?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the neighbors were aware something was going to be done there eventually. And it seems like, you know, this was a good compromise.
Mr. Frankel?
No opposition to a project on C Street speaks volumes. I'm in favor.
Mr. Hamel?
Oh, they, they did what we asked. They shrunk it up. They fixed the parking. I'm in favor.
Okay, can I have a motion, please, Mr. Bass?
Amendment number 21-95, Virtual Capital Group LLC for a varying special permit floodplain to construct a new side-by-side duplex style building on the premises number 599 C Street and make a motion to grant relief requested.
Seconding?
Second.
Second on the motion? Seeing none?
Thank you very much.
Hold on. Michael Cavazos?
Yes.
Brian Ray Dell?
Yes.
John Hamel?
Yes.
Jeffrey Frankel?
Yes.
And Marty Akins?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now you can say that, Counselor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Oh, you did a nice job. Thanks. We are on. We are on the last one, which I don't even know if they went to consecration yet, I'll ask. I don't know. ZBA 2197, 510 Willard Street LLC, instruct a new 30-unit multifamily residential building with garage parking under on the premise number 510. Councilor, did you go to? I haven't seen nothing yet. Did you go to planning yet?
We did. And we've received approval from the planning department.
You already have it, I don't have it. You have one of them? I don't have it. When you get there?
Oh, it was a month ago. It was, we filed, we didn't file until after we received approval from the planning board. Let me see if I have the date here.
That'd have to be November, I mean, October, November then.
Yeah.
If you filed then. No, I know, I just don't know what, I thought, I didn't think they went yet. That's why I was just asking before. You know. I don't remember that. And I didn't see anything. Go ahead, Councilor, then, if you say you may.
Yeah, we were on, we were on November 10th, I believe. We received approval for it on October. So again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of 510 Willard Street LLC. I'm also joined by Michael Moore, who is the principal of the LLC. Brian Donahue is here as well. Brian Donahue did the architectural plans, and will share those in a little bit more detail. And Eric Renanese of Engineering Alliance is the site engineer. And Eric will share the plans and speak to any kind of site-related questions that the board may have. This is another project that I think is a great project, and was, and went through a lot of work for years with meetings with the planning department, meetings with the neighbors, a number of neighborhood meetings. During that time, during those neighborhood meetings, Mr. Moore actually acquired additional land to improve the project and downsize the project to address questions and concerns that were raised by the neighbors. And I think what you'll hear tonight is a project that's gone through a lot of review, a lot of comments, and hopefully has addressed a lot of those same concerns. This is a, this project actually involves two parcels of land known as 510 and 514 to 516 Willard Street. As you look at it right now, if you drive by, it's kind of a strange, almost looks like a strange project or property, because it's got a couple of houses on the property. Two houses out front, and then a house in the rear of the site. But yet, it's surrounded by other larger multifamily residential buildings, certainly on Willard Street, where it's zoned Residence C. It also goes way back into a neighborhood that's zoned a little differently. It's zoned Residence B. And that's really what led to a lot of the questions and concerns that were raised by the neighbors, which we believe that we've worked through. It's a, the total size of the site now, with the addition of the secondary parcel, is 36,423 square feet in size. The proposal that's before you tonight involves the removal, obviously, of all three of the houses and the construction of a new 30-unit multifamily building with 60 parking spaces. And I won't go into too much detail of it with it, because Brian will do so in a moment. But as you know, this goes through, in the planning board level, it goes through a significant level of review. All the city departments, including traffic, DPW, review this plan. It goes through the independent peer review of an independent engineering company. Eric was great in working with them and addressing all the concerns that they had, as well as Brian, and all those drainage control questions, all those issues related to traffic control and traffic safety. Traffic safety was probably the primary issue of concern on Willard Street, because Willard Street's such a busy corridor. But you'll see, as this project was designed, it provides for a similar type of a pickup-drop-off-drive-through in the front of the building, as the property on Beale Street did as well. And in this particular project has both two entrances into the project site that allows for entrance into the driveway, to this drop-off driveway, but also into the garage and into the larger parking lot in the rear of the site. It was also, it also included a professional-designed landscaping plan, designed by Hawk Design, who does beautiful landscaping work. And that plan was presented to the neighbors. More the residential neighbors in the rear of the site, or towards the rear of the site, but certainly on both sides of the site. And it beefed up the landscaping that doesn't exist today on both sides of the site, along with some fencing. And it's going to prohibit any kind of entrance into the rear of the site from the back neighborhood, so that it protects and provides those neighbors with a nice buffer area. Michael Moore did a great job as well, and actually going to, in meeting in person with a couple of the residential neighbors that expressed concern. And I think did a nice job in incorporating their concerns into the plans. But this now has been fully approved by the planning board after that, after those modifications, and it addressed all those concerns and questions that were raised. So one of the most important things that was done by Mr. Moore during this planning was to address concerns related to parking as well. And that involved the reduction in the size of the proposal to 30 units, so that we would, that the 60 units would provide two spaces for each unit. And that was important, especially to the neighbors, because there's no parking that exists on Willard Street, because Willard Street's such a busy corridor. And certainly, we didn't want to interfere with any parking that exists in the rear for the smaller streets in the back of the site. So with that, I'd like Mr. Brian Donahue to have an opportunity to share the plans and walk through these, which I think is also a very nicely designed building. Thank you.
Can you guys see the screen okay here?
Yep. Great. Thanks, Eric.
We got it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. I'll give you a quick overview of the project. And then if you have questions for Eric Bradneys, you can answer any questions regarding drainage. We do have, Eric, we do have a copy of David Hawk's landscape plan in this package, don't we? So we can show. So this first drawing is really an overview of the site where our new building is proposed, and it gives you a little bit of context and a little where it sits on the strip on Willard Street. If we can zoom in there, Eric, I'd appreciate it, so we can look at it.
Yeah, I'll get that for you, hang on. There we go.
Great. So this particular drawing shows, you know, more from 30,000 feet, looking at the property, which is in the middle, and our new apartment building is this L-shaped building in the center. So we have, we have an entry from Willard Street that is south of the, the south end of the property that allows you, residents and delivery vehicles and so forth, to enter the site. There's a drop-off area which enters into the lobby for deliveries and for guests and so forth to come in. And then they can either go into the right side here, which is a one-way entry into the site, or they could come by the drop-off at the main entry and go into a garage, which the next drawing will indicate. So we also have a very healthy landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site. The building itself respects the 25-foot setback all the way around. So we have fencing, we have landscaping, and we have screening for the cars that are on-site in the back. And we also have vehicles that are underneath, underneath the building as well. So if we could go to the next drawing. So this is a blow-up of the ground floor, elevator, ground floor plan, which shows at a larger scale the traffic flow, which goes from the street into the garage to the right and the drop-off area into the lobby. So the lobby, the building at the ground level is strictly a trash room, a lobby area, an elevator, and then vertical circulation. We do have bike storage, which is under protection of the building, the rear of the, of the building footprint, which is represented with this dotted line that wraps around the perimeter here. Again, we, as Ed indicated, we have 30 units for the building. We have 60 parking spaces, which includes six guest spaces. Maybe we can zero in on those. There are four spaces at the, on the south side of the property, and two guest spaces out front on Willard Street. This shows the proximity of the building and the site and the setbacks that we're expecting around the property. We do have a small landscape area in the triangular shape to the south, on the right side, for any kind of outdoor activities. The building above the garage is four levels of 30 units, so we have eight, eight, seven, and seven. That's the dispersment. They're all two-bedroom units of varying sizes and orientations. It's going to give a nice variety of options for the renters who are looking to live in this property. So these drawings represent contextual situations, so we're emphasizing, of course, that this building is appropriate and fits in with the character of this drive along Willard Street. It shows there's, to the north, there's a six-story apartment building, condominium building. Right here, and to the south, there's a four-story building. So we think that this, our project fits neatly into this streetscape as you approach, come down Willard Street from the south. The other renderings, maybe just back up once.
Sorry, Brad.
But this is, these, the one on the top left represents the front elevation. So we've got a couple of different materials here. Most of it is composite siding. It's a contemporary design. We do have bay windows to replicate a more of a residential character to the building. We have lap siding, fiber siding, and smooth panels as well. The area to the right on that upper-left drawing is living space above the entry lobby. As you can see, we've tried to provide a very healthy landscape buffer. On the right side picture, you can see a tree line that goes down the north side of the site, tremendously screening this property from the neighbors to the north. We go to the next drawing. This shows, the bottom shows the elevation of our building in respect to the neighbors. Obviously, this is not a completely flat road, so it does, actually goes up in elevation as you go to the south. So the apartment building on the right is actually, would actually be higher than our building. And the rendering on the top shows that context as well. These two drawings show the elevations and how it relates to the landscape. We show the fencing that wraps the perimeter and the middle elevation, which is actually the south elevation. Shows that our building has got parking at grade, but it's screened very well by partitioning and landscaping as well at that ground level. The building is five stories, including the parking, so it says the height is 49 feet to the highest point. This drawing is a shadow study, which was an appointment of the planning board, which shows the impact of the building, or the lack of impact of the building actually on neighboring properties because of the orientation of the sun and how it really is creating shadows towards Willard Street in most of the, most of the situations, because the sun will travel in that direction. The next sheet is really a blow-up of the building elevations, which show the character, the siding, the smooth panels, the different colors, to give it some, to give it some character in elevation and in the longitudinal way. We're also showing the possibility of doing some solar panels on the roof. We've got a fairly decent-sized roof area, which we're looking into the possibility of doing solar panels. So we wanted to represent that as a possibility. In terms of the architectural presentation, that's it for me. I think if anybody has any questions on that, we can take it after. I don't know if Eric's going to do his, show his thing on the.
Yeah, I can speak briefly, Brian, just about the site in general. Thank you for that. So, I mean, I think a lot of it's been covered, but just to touch on a couple of things and reiterate a few things here. So this is just the general site plan. The, you know, tannish color you see here is the footprint of the building. The gray area here is access to the building. As Brian mentioned, we have the, there's the two entry points here. There's one entrance to the south, which allows the access to the drop-off area and a one-way into the building. That was specifically requested as a traffic control and a safety item to make sure that this was a one-way through the building. So you come in, come into the building up this direction, and then have exit this way. Then there's two-way in and out of the building and in access to the rear parking area. As another item that was requested by the city traffic engineer, we have placed a concrete rumble strip that would dictate right-in, right-out for this particular location here. There's also the island out on Willard Street that tends to do that as well, but this is just another precaution to make sure that there is no opportunity for anybody to try to make a left turn coming out of the property here, just for safety reasons. We've got snow storage provided in all of the previous areas on the site. That's the clouded areas you can see here. I think Brian mentioned this as well. There's an amenity space out to the side here of the building in this little triangular area as well. For stormwater, we are maintaining all stormwater on site. Basically, we are using porous asphalt, so all of the asphalt area you see shown on the site here will infiltrate stormwater directly. We've brought you guys in the drainage report with an operation and maintenance plan that has a very thorough discussion of how to maintain that, to make sure that it will function properly, and how to take care of it in the event that there is any cloggings or anything in the asphalt. But again, those are sized to hold a 100-year storm event, so the intent is to have no stormwater exit the site at any point in time. You can see there are some catch basins with some pipes that run the perimeter of the property. Those are strictly for emergency hold, so in the event that, like, porous asphalt gets clogged or something happens there, those things are never intended to see water unless there is some sort of a failure in those systems. And it's been thoroughly reviewed by peer review and also by the city engineer, and they have signed off on those. There's also a separate stormwater system for the roof that'll go subsurface here. It's this little blue area here. And then as far as utilities go, there'll be standard water sewer, just provided directly from Willard Street. Oh, there'll be a gas trap service in the parking area underneath the building as well. And just one last item, I'm sure you guys, I do have a copy of that landscaping plan, that Hawk Design prepared. This is just showing the extent of the very robust landscape around the exterior of the property to provide screening from the parking in the back here, as well as the parking underneath the building.
And what that all shows, shows, I just want to highlight, thank you, Eric, that's a great, that's a great plan to show. It shows that Larring Street in the back, where it dead-ends, there will be prohibition for any kind of travel through that area, so that there's no reason for any vehicles for this particular proposal to enter onto Larring Street and to go into the site and in the rear of the site. That will be fenced off as well as landscaped as well. And we worked very closely with the, with the woman that lives at the end of Larring Street on the left, Mrs. McGyser, Barbara McGyser. Michael actually went and sat at her kitchen table and chatted with her about her concerns, and we think we've addressed a lot of her concerns through the landscaping and the fencing. The other thing I just wanted to point out, and that's a great presentation, guys, and I wanted to point out that, for those of you who don't know Michael Moore, Michael's done, did another project that's right at the entrance of the new North Quincy football field. It's a beautiful gray, it's a nice gray multifamily building right there on Newberry, right at the entrance. If you have, if you've been over there, you would have noticed it. It's a very nicely done project and very well received by the neighbors, and there's some good tenants and a great tenant base within that building. And there's some good tenants and a great tenant base within that building. Michael holds on to these projects and manages them after the fact. So this will be an apartment building, but it'll be managed specifically by Michael in his portfolio of buildings. And he's done a great job in the city so far on the project over in North Quincy. That's our presentation, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. If you have any questions, we could certainly answer any questions that the board may have.
No, I just, you answered my question. I thought these were condos. You're going to have rentals in there, correct?
Yes.
Now, if these are going to be turned into condos later, which I'm noticing lots of problems with that. The plumbing's going to be different, the shut-offs will be different, there won't be rises. Is it going to be done like that for that, or is it going to be done for apartment rentals? So if you end up turning them into condos and I want to put a dishwasher, I mean, a new washer and dryer in my unit, but I can't, there's no shut-offs working, I have to shut off a rise. Is each floor going to have their own? Is each apartment going to have their own? You know, if you have a fault somewhere, you're going to do this. So if these get turned into condos, is it going to be plumbed and electrically made to be a condominium?
Mr. Chairman, the discussions that we've had with Mr. Moore and his partner are strictly about these units being rentals. That is typically what they do with all their property developments. So we haven't gotten to those deep-in-the-weeds conversations about building systems. But my conversations with them today have all been about these being rental apartments.
And I want people to think about this, because this is what's going on out there. These apartment buildings being changed over. Now you've got a lady on the third floor that wants to put in a washer and dryer, and she has one of those pull-off, turn-off, it don't work no more because it was never exercised, so they don't work. Washing dryer shut-offs don't work. Now, to get her to get into washing dryer, you've got to have $1,200 insurance policy for a twenty-minute job, change the washer and dryer. You can't get it. She can't get it done right now because it was an apartment building turned into condo units. So people aren't looking at this when they're buying these condos. They're buying a condo thinking they're buying a condo, and they're not. They're buying an apartment, an apartment building, which you have to shut down rises to do stuff. And it's really bizarre. And the more I think about this, I think even the code, and I'm going to speak at the code seminars, that we have to change this whole way of doing business, really. Because it's not fair to the consumer. The consumer ends up screwed in the end. Not saying your company, here's what I'm saying. Twenty years from now, thirty years from now, you sell that building. Why? You don't want it. It's going to need some upgrades, this, you say, okay, just sell. And all of a sudden, it's not wired right, and those people are buying condos, and they're really, they're getting jammed, and they don't know it until it's too late. Anyway, that was my two cents. But I think it is a good-looking project. I do think you're asking for an awful lot on that project myself, as far as square footage and bar and the whole bit. But I know where it is, too, and it's changing the city, and the city is changing. And I'm going to think about this very seriously in the next few minutes. Any questions on you, Mr. Cabas?
I do not have any.
Mr. Radell.
Yeah, Councilman Fleming, you mentioned something about purchasing another house adjacent to it. Is it, did, these plans include that? Was that something that happened recently, or? No, the project was originally only included 510 Willard Street, which is a larger parcel. And then after discussions with the neighbors, after discussions and concerns raised by the neighbors in the planning department, he acquired the site at 514 to 516, which is kind of a triangular piece on the right. And that was added to the proposal. And even though he added that additional land and that additional cost, the proposal did not increase in size, and he actually just provided additional square footage for the project. And since that time, Mr. Radell, during the planning board process, we actually reduced the project even further to get to a two-per-unit parking count.
Awesome. I commend, we hear that a lot from people, you know, we always say, hey, did you talk to the neighbors? I got to commend that. And the only other thing I got to say is, and I can't believe Marty didn't say it. You got your solar study in here, Marty, and you haven't even commented on it.
Because that was for the other units that were in that building, I believe. That's okay.
You finally see, you finally see some impacts of sunlight on neighborhoods. You say it all the time, and you didn't even bring it up.
Sunlight's in neighborhoods, really. I tell you, it's about time. We've got to start changing this whole system. I mean, it's getting brutal.
Councilman Fleming's progressive on this.
He never gives credit. He never gives credit, you know, he only criticizes them.
I couldn't have, I couldn't have the best neighbor in the whole world, which I do. I couldn't ask for a better guy. And when we built this house, he took away probably ten to fifteen, maybe twenty percent of my mourning soul. I don't get it, because the sun's going to get up higher over his house. And that's just, that's life. That's just life. I mean, it happens. But these are things that people are talking about, we're not talking about yet. I think we got to stop talking about it. It's like, you know, what's fair for the goose again? And not a view, I don't care about the viewpoint. I care about people's sunlight rights, buying buildings that are used, and no one looks into them, and all of a sudden, they let them turn them into condos. Those are the things we are all going to start having these conversations about. If we're thinking about turning it over. I know no one does, because it's all money, 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 but that's all right. Thank you, Mr. Redell, for grabbing me. Mr. Chin, you're in this one, go ahead.
Yes, I don't have any questions at this point in the hall for now.
Where am I here? Mr. Himmel. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Himmel. Mr. O'Brien.
He's muted, but he said no.
You will? Yeah, all right. Mr. Himmel, you're in.
I have no questions.
Okay. It's getting confusing all of a sudden. I looked up, I didn't even realize, I goes, oh, there he is. All right, let's go from here, I guess. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? First call?
You have Citizen Rotifal, Mr. Chairman.
Citizen Rotifal. You've been sworn in, Citizen. Now you just cut me out of what? There he is.
There I am. Oh, my cat didn't like that. John Rotifal, 62 Bramall Road. This is my final two cents, so I think I've contributed a dime to this meeting tonight. I certainly don't get paid to be here. But this is, this is all about the new growth in the city. This is, as far as I'm concerned, will add about $12 million in new growth, which we need. We have a lot of debt, we have a lot of bills. We need the new growth. This is a great, I mean, it's, there's a lot of traffic on that street during rush hour, and I think there's still going to be a lot of traffic on that street during rush hour. But the new growth is desperately needed, and this is a great project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call?
Yeah, Michael Weber.
Michael, take an oath, please.
It's why I tell the truth, the whole truth, not the book of truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Weber, One Thursday Ave. I live actually directly up the street from where this project is going to be happening. I think it's a great fit for the neighborhood. I think it's a good spot, and I think it's going to actually really look nice. Like, there is always traffic on Willard Street. There's always going, and it's going to continue to always be traffic on Willard Street. And I can't see this being that much of an impact.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Second call? Third call? All that part of the hearing closed? Anything from the PPW? All right. Is there anyone opposed to undecided?
Mr. Chairman, somebody did send a chat if you wanted to open and read it, and then they had to step out. Otherwise, I could read it for you if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, John, read that in.
All right.
Be in favor? Opposed? John?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. That's my fault, I thought I was reading that to you.
Oh, no, no.
Sorry.
All right.
All right, you hear me okay? No, sorry, it's from Michelle Fish. I apologize for commenting early. Unfortunately, I have an ill family member to care for. I'm very opposed to this project. As a neighbor and a person in construction, engineering, losing it here. Regardless of design, this project will cause hardship to the area. The local traffic is already a safety issue with commuters traveling down one-way streets the wrong way in a half-mile strip that can take twenty-plus minutes to travel. Six guest spots for thirty units is insufficient and will likely cause even more parking on Willard Street's sidewalks. Infrastructure overload is not even being mentioned. I will try to save that for you as well.
What was her name?
Michelle Fish.
Okay.
F-I-S-H.
All right. I have one more letter since we're having letters. This is just, it's Mary Ellen, it's, no, it's Mary E. McLean, Weston Ave. And she's against the project. The councilor told her to call. She opposes the project just because it'll generate traffic during and afterwards construction. Thirty units with parking for all those, potentially one more for each car, just too much for the area. She just opposed, so that'll be in the records, too. Anyone else opposed to, a Quincy resident we have here?
Yeah, we're going to go to Quincy resident, followed by Cheryl Erickson.
Quincy resident, could you take an oath, please? Unmute yourself? Can you unmute yourself?
There should be a little button there on the bottom. You see it? Should be a button to unmute yourself. There you go, perfect, you got it.
There you go.
Oh, no, you muted it again. Click that one again.
Click that again, yeah. You went out. Try it again. If you can click that again.
There you go.
I'm here.
All right.
Hi, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the book of truth, so help you God?
I don't.
Thank you.
All right, I am Mrs. McGyser, as you might know. I am the name of Butter. He is building, my bedroom is fifty feet from where the building's going to be. So I'm going to have somebody living in an apartment looking in my, looking in my house, my den and my bedroom, right? And. I'm not for progress, but I am a little old-fashioned. You're ripping up our neighborhood. You're just tearing a neighborhood apart, that's all. But as far as, and I'm concerned about when the cars come in and out, they'll be right in my window, right in my dining room, and right in my whole house. And that isn't, you know, as far as the building goes, it's ugly. The other.
We might have, might have lost her with an internet issue there.
All right, we can get back if she gets back on. Anyone else opposed to undecided? We can get back to you, Quincy resident.
We have Cheryl Erickson.
Back to you, Cheryl Erickson.
Hi there. Good evening.
Take an oath, please. The whole truth, not the book of truth, so help you God.
I do. Hi, my name is Cheryl Erickson. I live on 20 Bunker Hill Lane, which is off of Furnace Brook Parkway, which Furnace Brook Parkway feeds directly into Willard Street, right where this project is going to be. I am opposed to it. If the, I understand that the developer has the right to develop the property he has bought. I just wish that he would reduce the scale of this project because it's not like the project on Beale Street that's a walkable to public transportation. The only way in and out of this project is by vehicle, by car. And this area is already exacerbated with traffic. So I just want to go on record as being opposed. I thank the chairman and all of you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eric. Anyone else opposed to undecided? Third call? All that part of the hearing closed? I don't know. I really don't. I know we need growth out there, I know we do. And I, I like the way that they're turning out of the building, you've got to turn right so you won't be going in and out across the street. But I want to hear what the board says about this. Scabas, what's your thoughts?
Well, my thought is that the street is full of high-rises and one more is not going to hurt anything. So I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Mr. Radell?
I think they've, I think they've done a lot, you know, I mean, there's not a lot you can do. You know, you have three old houses that, you know, probably, we assess at a million bucks. This thing's going to be assessed at 12 million bucks. It's, and I know it's not all about money, and I understand the concerns about neighborhood, but I think they're doing everything that they can do to try and preserve what's behind them without impacting them. You know, buying that other house, you know, goes a long way with me. I think that it shows that they're trying to do the right thing. They're buying whole people, that shows they're trying to do the right thing, so. Favor.
I didn't know that till tonight, you're right. Mr. Chin?
I think the building and the design are consistent with what is surrounding this building proposed. And I don't, it does look big on paper with all of the parking, especially heading out towards the back. I am assuming that the, that the closure of that back street is to protect and preserve the neighborhood back there so that there isn't a cut-through. Of course, doing that creates additional traffic on Willard Street by necessity. So I'm assuming that they thought that through very carefully and that the closure of the street on balance made more sense than to keep it open. I like the idea of having solar panels, there should be more solar. I'm a little uncomfortable with the way that that was delivered in terms of whether it's going to happen or not happen. I don't like to see a true commitment of that. I'm also in favor of having the larger trees and the density of the landscape for this project.
They're running out of money, the state's shutting that down, and we want to keep it open on the state, so. That's, 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 it's finances, it's all, it's finances. Who else am I have here tonight?
John, Mr. Himmel.
Mr. Himmel.
Mr. Himmel. Well, as much as I'd like to gripe about the parking, they do have sixty parking spaces. It is a robust landscaping plan, and I think it does fit in with the buildings to the left and the right of it, and even the larger buildings on the brentry side, so. And they've gone a long way buying additional property. That triangle piece of property on the right adds to it. Taking the right out of the building, I think, will, instead of both ways, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you. You know, and it doesn't really matter my vote now, but I'm going to tell you, it's like, it's, it's, there's two things here that made me vote the way I'm going to vote, is you bought that extra property, and that was a good thing. And it's all, it's, that's just state monies, if it's going to come or not, you've got to figure out the finances before putting it on. But my board, my board thinking, because they, they know that area better than I do. And I'll be voting in favor. Could I have, Mr. Cabas, could I have a motion, please?
That's Mr. Cabas, number 21-97. 5 Ted Willard Street LLC for a variance constructed in thirty-unit multifamily residential building with garage parking under the premises number 5 Ted Willard Street. I make the motion to grant the variance.
I second it.
Second.
On the motion, I got something to say here. We should have seventy-two parking spaces for those units, but we don't. But sixty, that, that, that's, I guess, today's market. Could I have a roll call, please? Michael Covas?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
No, it wasn't Charlie, it was me.
Brian Radell?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
And Marty Aiken?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, again. Thank you very much.
Can I have a, a motion, please, Mr. Red?
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn.